Feeling nice and cool in my friend. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our council meeting on June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Um, I want to say before we get started, we're all gonna try to be really good about our microphones tonight because we have I air conditioners going in the room, um, just to make sure everything's picked up. Um, but for those of you here, raise your hand if you're having trouble hearing them. Um, if everyone would rise to join us for the public.
I totally just with the bad, yeah, I have seen this up here. And to do a little while, which stands on nation other guy, it is almost liberty, and that's been a struggle.
Thank you. Our first order of business this evening, we have a public hearing for credit enhancement agreement. Uh, so provide a little bit of context here. We have a credit enhancement agreement in our supporting box this evening. Um, associated with Redbird Properties LLC. Um, and as a formality in our process, we have a responsibility to hold a public hearing for any and all credit enhancement agreements that the town may be going into. Uh, hence our five years' night. Uh, does anyone have anything they would like to speak to regarding the current credit enhancement agreement? Looks like no one in the audience, anyone on the phone? Or in Zoom? Counselors, staff?
You asked to say that questions to.
Um, all right, seems like uh, we can close the credit enhancement agreement of the hearing, uh, six thirty two PM. And we'll open up our regular council meeting.
For work, yes.
Do formally both reading of. Yes, I do. Thank you. Uh, I'll make a motion to formally close the public hearing for credit announcement agreement for record properties at six thirty two PM.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second, all those in favor say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Lesanne.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
I'm motion back to support the euro. Thank you, Diane. Uh, all right, moving into our town council meeting, uh, roll call. Um, we have four counselors present this evening, so I may, um, with any vote of confidence tonight. Um, and we'll move into the approval of minutes from June tenth, two thousand and twenty five. Counselors, anyone have any edits to the minutes from? I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes for our town council meeting on June tenth, two thousand and twenty five. Asbury.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Willa.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
I motion back to support you. Uh, next, we have the treasurer's warrant. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated eighteen, two thousand and twenty five, in the amount of five hundred thirty five thousand, eight hundred seventy nine dollars and one cent.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any special on the warrant? Questions? All right, all those in favor of signing the warrant, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Willa. Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
I motion back to support you. All right, reports and presentations. Kristy is here, Kelly Pacey. Um, if you come up to the podium and, um, introduce yourself. Uh, yeah, so Christie Ravaska is here to give us our annual update on all things stormwater. Um, and I'll just let you go ahead. I mean, Diane, do you have slides or anything we're pulling up, or you just, nope, okay, great.
Reform.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for having me. So my name's Christie Ravaska, and I'm an environmental engineer. And I help the town of South Berwick comply with the general permit for stormwater discharges from municipal separate storm sewer systems. So all the catch basins that are in the road go directly out into the small streams and the rivers untreated. So they had to have a permit associated with it. So I've, um, we put together just a couple of items that I think the, we thought the council would be interested in hearing about. Um, updated, um, audits, upcoming audits from the main DEP. And, um, some low impact development standards. And then there's one other item that's not in your letter. Um, that I'll, uh, touch upon also, which are nitrogen standards that are, uh, becoming increasingly important in, um, the state of Maine. So, um, so as you guys probably know, the town's been regulated since two thousand and three. And we are now finishing up permit year three of our fourth general permit. Every time one of these Clean Water Act permits comes through, regulating the stormwater discharges, um, things get a little more stringent. Um, so the next permit will be issued in two thousand and twenty seven. Finishing up permit year three, we'll have four, year four and five. And then the next permit will come through with some additional standards. So it's a, we call it a general permit because there are, uh, twenty eight other communities in the state that are also regulated for these discharges, and they all have to do the same things. The general permit applies to all of us. Um, and, um, I actually work for, um, a consortium, the Southern Maine Stormwater Working Group, through a regional contract um, to help Elliott, Kittering, Rourke, Berwick and South Berwick. We all have same things we have to do so. And some of those things are like the public education and outreach, um, public participation. Everybody can impact stormwater by, you know, dumping things in the street or discharging things into the catch basins. So we have a little public education campaign. Um, we do that all jointly. Um, there are also illicit discharge detection and elimination requirements that all the communities have to do. So we, we work on stuff like that together. Um, and then things that affect, affect planning and code are construction runoff control, post-construction runoff control. Um, and just making sure the sediment stays on site and that, um, some of these treatment systems that are becoming more sophisticated now on these development sites. We want to make sure that they are maintained in perpetuity. So we have the post-construction where the subdivisions, um, commercial entities have to maintain their systems. And then there's pollution prevention, good housekeeping, street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, um, a lot of outfall inspections. Um, so this, this, this permit affects these twenty seven communities. It affects like almost all municipal operations for all of the communities. And, um, so I work with most of the staff here in helping them to understand the permit requirements and get them all, get them all implemented. Um, so the, the couple of things I'll focus on are that, um, you know, every, every set, the, the audits first, the main DEP audits. So every year, the town does have to submit an annual report to the main DEP. And, um, describes what we've done all year long, how we got everything done. Um, but the, the DEP is also required to come and audit each municipality, kind of as a double check on the paperwork that we've submitted. So they'll come into town. So they audited, um, Elliot this fall, and they audited Berwick this fall, skipped over us, which was great. But, um, that audit will probably be coming up in the next year or two. So all the staff will be involved in, you know, they'll just rush up on everything. We, we always try to make sure everything's going well, but that'll be coming up. So, um, they'll be, they'll be reviewing. The DEP will come in and they will review all aspects of, of permit compliance. Um, and then, um, the update on the low impact development standards. So this, this will affect planning board code. Um, and, um, public works a little bit, but, um, so for the most part, the main Department of Environmental Protection has some pretty robust, but aging standards for development. So they've been working on updating those. And, uh, simultaneous to that, these twenty eight regulated communities have to implement additional, more stringent standards because we have more impervious cover and more development in our areas, right? People want to live in our communities a little more. So, um, we've been, I think we're on our fourth or fifth iteration of what those ordinance changes for low impact development are going to look like. They've been very controversial among the twenty eight communities. We've been waiting for the state standards to become more mature, get a little further along in their adoption of some new state standards. So, um, we're on the fourth iteration. We just got a new draft of that and the comment period closed in, I believe it was, um, April of this year, and we're, we're waiting for that final. When do these low impact development standards going to hit? And when do we have to start updating the ordinances to, um, adopt them all? Um, and so that will probably happen in August or September. And, um, once those get finalized, um, there's a, a thirty day appeal period after they get finalized. So we will wait until that thirty day appeal period has passed to make sure that nobody's gonna appeal it before we really start moving forward and, and changing the ordinances. Um, so probably start working with planning board on that, um, in September, maybe early October. And, um, I, I believe that right now we'll have until November of two thousand and twenty six to get that work done. So that should be pretty good. And most of the changes that we're going to be adopting are going to align with the state standards. But they're going to be applied to this community at a smaller threshold. Um, and there will be a few that will be a little more stringent. So um, so those are coming up. And then, um, I think the other thing, I think, I don't know if you have it on your, do they have it on their agenda now to talk about their street sweeper?
No, well, yeah, later on.
Yeah, later on in the agenda, yeah. So, so the low impact development standards are gonna be a good, a good benefit to nitrogen reduction. And, um, the, the Great Bay Estuary in New Hampshire has been impaired for nitrogen reduction for many years. And on the New Hampshire side, all the New Hampshire communities, um, are being required to do a little bit more street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, and low impact development work in order to reduce the nitrogen standards. Um, and that is now coming to Maine in, in quite a delayed fashion. Um, and I'm not sure why it's so delayed, but it is, it is coming here. I guess, I guess I do know. In part, it's because the, uh, the, it's tied to the wastewater treatment plants. So the wastewater treatment plants are beginning, um, being given a mandate in their permits to reduce nitrogen. And one of the ways that they can do that is to partner with the communities to do some extra nitrogen reduction. And then they get a little relief on having to do some pretty big capital projects. So, um, street sweeping goes a long way towards nitrogen reduction. You know, all of the leaves, all the brush, all the duff, um, all the atmospheric deposition of nitrogen can be removed through street sweeping. And, um, I know the Public Works Director was looking, uh, to purchase a new street sweeper so that they could sweep more frequently, which would be a good benefit to the bay and the nitrogen production. So I don't know if I'll be here for the street sweeping discussion, but look at me, questions on any of that.
You have a question? Question for Kristy? Yeah, go ahead.
There should be, um, not to jump into the other topic, but, uh, because you mentioned uh, that street sweeping is helpful towards the nitrogen, which is what you said was in your purview. Can you better explain to me so I better understand how a piece of equipment solves the nitrogen and the why? That I'm not understanding.
Oh, yeah. Well, the, the, the leaves and the dust and the, um, you know, fertilizers from runoff, um, and car exhaust all has elements of nitrogen that end up on the paved surfaces. And, you know, after it rains, when that water goes down, I don't know what your background is, but I mean, when it rains, all that water and all of those pollutants typically go into the catch basins and then straight out to the water bodies untreated. So if we can do more frequent sweeping, um, we can catch that before it makes its way into the catch basins and out into the, into the water bodies.
Awesome.
Um, where did it go? I have a question in my head.
Um, yeah.
I think that a lot.
It'll come back.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I do have a question. Um, so typically, I believe that's the street sweeping was predominantly done right after the winter season. Um, and that's kind of to get any sand or salt debris like up off of the roads, any leaf debris that was left over from the fall that, you know, wasn't picked up. So we're, we're, you're saying that more street sweeping should occur. Um, in other towns typically, how often does it occur? Because I feel like running a big piece of equipment is actually worse for the environment than doing multiple rounds of cleaning up excessive nitrogen.
Mm-hmm. There will be a point, um, at which it's not beneficial to just like run the sweeper twenty four seven cleaning the street, cleaning the streets. But, um, you know, other communities in town, most other communities in the state of Maine are sweeping right after snowfall, especially the regulated ones. We have to do that. Um, but then again, in the fall, um, as the leaves are falling and before the snow falls, to try to get as much of that leaf litter and dust um, out of the roads before the snow falls, because otherwise that is just gonna all end up. So that's a, that's actually a, you know, a two times benefit for it. Um, and then, um, as, as part of the work, um, that I would actually be helping the sewer district with on the nitrogen reduction, we have to log, um, in a, a University of New Hampshire system. Um, how many times we do the street sweeping and how many miles of road we have swept and what the width of the sweeper is. And we will, and, uh, um, there'll be a nitrogen reduction credit assigned to the town and the sewer district for that nitrogen removal. So the kind of three frequencies that they have are that twice a year is like the bare minimum that is recommended for the credit. Um, and then there's, um, monthly, and then there's, um, twice a month. So, and then, and they say anything beyond that is, you know, you're definitely causing more pollution.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Yeah, if I have to.
Come back to that.
The, the nitrogen issue, uh, in your presentation, you mentioned a couple bullet points and I felt as I, I heard it, I felt like the nitrogen thing was kind of, oh, in this. Is the nitrogen issue part of this contract right now, or is this just the, the next?
It's, it's part of, I believe, what will happen in two thousand and twenty seven when we see the next stormwater permit. Um, so for now, it affects the sewer district. And I, I don't know if you gave them an update on the meeting we had with the sewer district, but the sewer district approached the town and asked us to sit down and they, they wanted to know what kind of street sweeping we were doing and what was going on with low impact. What kinds of nitrogen removal things do we already have going on? Um, because they're getting pressured on their side. And their contribution to nitrogen in Great Bay is about twenty five percent of the night, the wastewater treatment plants are contributing twenty five percent. And the communities with all of our land masses, um, the calculations that UNH has been doing and, and, you know, DES, New Hampshire DES is that the communities are contributing with seven, they're seventy five percent. So they're, they are also pushing their MS fours to do more nitrogen reduction. So we, we're anticipating that we will probably see it in two thousand and twenty seven when the permit renews.
All right, so I think we're good. Thank you, Kristy, for coming. Thank you for the update and for the work that I know you'll be doing with us.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for coming up in my time. All right, so, um, that covers reports and presentations. Um, moving on to public comments. If anyone in the room that would like to speak about anything on the agenda? Anyone on Zoom? Thank you. Uh, I will just uh, mention the council had received an email this morning that I am trying to locate, uh, um, from Terry Coolen at Sixty Two Rofield Drive, um, regarding our agenda item later on, um, new business number three. Um, given that it was made for a specific item, I'm mentioning it now and we'll kind of mention it fully here. Um, I wanted to mention that from a public comment standpoint, I only chart for this view. Uh, but other than that, that's all of the public correspondence the council has received. Um, so we'll move on to unfinished business number one, credit enhancement agreements. So we had a public hearing at the beginning of this meeting, or at the top of this meeting, um, for the credit enhancement agreement with, uh, shoot, two, red, what is it called?
Redbird Property.
Redbird Property, thank you very much. Um, and so now, um, it's up for the council to, uh, discuss that and to, uh, uh, decide if we want to allow, essentially the motion on the people that will need to make to fill out man, coming to sign the credit enhancement agreement for tax now, lot map one, lot thirty three, desk one. Um, Melissa, I know you have a question about that. Uh, I like you with the last question. Yeah, okay.
Um, I don't know if this goes to Taylor or to Carla. Thank you for being here. Uh, so, uh, I'm not a lawyer, but in reading the contract, uh, what I got out of it was, um, it looks like we're looking at, uh, a hundred percent of the increased assessed value going back at ten thousand a year up to eighty thousand for eight years. Does that sound right?
So the hundred percent, uh, the hundred percent is the captured value.
Yes.
So we're not giving a hundred percent back. It, that portion says that you're capturing a hundred percent, but the reimbursement rate is the fifty percent. So it's, it's, it's the same thing that you guys said, um, agreed in the program too. So it's not a hundred percent. But the, it is up to ten thousand a year, up to the total of eighty thousand. So if it, if they qualify for their fifty percent equals ten thousand, then that, that's their upper cap. So we're making sure it doesn't get way out of control with the reimbursement rate. So, yeah. Oh, I'll just stay up here.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'm still like, I'm trying to wrap my head around this whole, like, it's still like uncharted waters for me.
Absolutely. It's our first one.
Yeah, no, and that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, my other question was, uh, so with doing the, the fifty percent, that was like kind of the highest, like standard that we were looking.
Yep.
So I felt like, um, this application didn't capture many of the factors that are considered in determining, um, the town's level of participation, if that makes any sense.
Yep.
Uh, so could you maybe push me to the other side with maybe some, um, extended meeting circumstances that existed that made us want to give this much to this business and just consider where it is the first one.
Sure.
And I know we're not technically setting a precedent because every application will be treated, you know, differently.
Absolutely.
But on the first one, if we have another business like this, we technically are setting a precedent.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that.
Absolutely. Um, so this is a firm who, um, basically, um, who was, uh, kind of attracted to come to our town based on, uh, a credit enhancement agreement, um, proposal. Um, and they, what they do is they, they do woodworking, um, and they use all locally sourced, um, lumber and labor. Um, so it's, it's not a situation where they're taking lumber from a different state or any place. Um, this is very specific to the state of Maine and to Southern Maine. Um, and so this, this counts as, as a part of our, um, industry building, um, as you would say, in South Berwick, um, where we don't have a lot of, um, and so this is, we were looking through that lens. Uh, this is a, a brand new, uh, company coming into South Berwick using locally sourced lumber and labor who wants to build their company, um, bigger here. And this gives them, um, a, a better chance to do so. Um, I definitely understand where you're coming from. Um, honestly, it's going to be up to you all's best judgment on, you know, uh, of these standards that are set within the contract. Um, we support you either way that you go. We, we absolutely do. Um, and we just wanted to put these, uh, these in front of you, um, because we thought that this was, um, a, a fair representation of how we all thought a credit enhancement agreement would go. Um, and we're doing our best judgment to see, okay, this is something that they, they may support, the board may support. Yeah. Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you to Carla.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions or anything else they wanted to discuss on this topic?
I was trying to, um, in looking at, I appreciate you saying this, the first one, because I was like, oh, I'm not, I'm not one, all right. So I'm glad to do that. Um, I was on the same lines of like, um, how big are we gonna go at the first? Um, and, and just for the council, just how I've resigned, I, where I've gone to is, uh, kind of, I'm really for the program. I think it's really a really good thing for South Berwick and for the future. And, um, I was really stuck on the amount. And, uh, but I got to the point of just saying, okay, well, I guess there's the beauty of learning, right? And maybe we can force correct and kind of sway that and forth with, with the future. And so that's where I've kind of rested. It's not hard fast, but, but, so I, I, I appreciate the work and and, uh, that's, I just wanted to share that with you guys. There's been a little lies and.
Thank you. Any, you know, you can.
Normally, um, obviously any company that, this is, I don't, this is not a point, it's just kind of something that popped up, a little business is going to start popping out. Everybody that, that's been, not that they can. They're each individual, uh, applications. So is there a process or like in uh, a way that we're looking at kind of like overall to that, you know, twenty bit, twenty businesses all put in for this, um, maximum amount, we grant it to all of them at that amount. And is that how, like, somebody looking at that? Big picture aspect of it when we're talking about how they're all individual, but how's that? Process.
I, I kind of get where you're going with it. So allow me to just jump in just a little bit. Um, so in order to even qualify to put in for this type of agreement, um, it's not something that, um, that a current business can do. Um, except if they're, they're offering a improvement that's going to have a valuation of a million plus. Um, and so this is, this is, um, a valuation or business that without Um and so this is, this is um a valuation or business that without this type of agreement, it would not come to here and be a part of a a a South Borough. Um this is also tied directly to your Tiff district, which is as temporary in nature. So this is a very um in a sense of a business, it's supposed to be a a short term for a long term business. And so um to help them get established, um and and that's important because you're you're really talking about businesses that have high capital um expenditures and cannot move freely very quickly. Um and that's that's through a lens also to look, you know, are are we looking at a business can that we're gonna give a CEA agreement for to get them up and running and then they're just going to get out of here after they get their money. Um one thing I'll say uh about that is number one is the reimbursement program, right? Um and it's reimbursing a portion of their taxes. It's not giving them something from our own coffers. It's it's allowing them to have a discount on their taxes coming up. And number two, you know, if if we are looking at any of the businesses that we're looking to have a a credit enhancement agreement, is that it has to be for a length of time that they're gonna stay here and that you're gonna get some benefit of of the town financially from. Um and then um and then separately from that, you know, you are looking at the intangibles that, you know, that Melissa has brought up. I feel like, you know, is this a type of business or is something that we wanna support going forward? Do we wanna see more of these types of businesses here and can this be um a way to market that for those businesses to come here and be a part of our town? Um and eventually help our tax base. You know, it's it's one of the tools in the um in the bucket that you can use and you can choose to use it or you can choose not to. But we wanted to give you guys this tool. So um if you felt appropriate, you can you can do so. Yep.
Awesome. Thank you for the clarification and really so that doesn't have any negative impact on taxes that we're already bringing in. It's just producing a little bit more actually, well, not actually, eventually we'll be getting more back in.
Correct. Yeah, correct. And so this doesn't allow them to, you know, these tax revenues would not exist if this business kind of doesn't come in and try to that that be a part of this agreement. And so this one is one of the ones that you're looking for. This is our first one. It's our first go at it. Um so we're all learning at the same time on what type of businesses that you you think is appropriate to use this for.
Thank you, Carlo. Uh any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
So I'm realizing that it's limited to our Tiff districts, which is the only box of districts and then the uh bump it down. So first off, extremely limited space area where this can go. But in other words, it would be hard for, if you're gonna have the increased value of a million dollars, right? How would you get that off of us? If if you were, say, South Borough, I'll speak to that. You're not gonna go do that, but you I don't even know if we got it in front of anything, right? So I think we're limited there. Then the other part, so then that really puts us to constant difficulty. And we know because we've done all the research, that much as we've all think that you could have a super warehouse there, you know, we can't because we don't have water here. We're gonna be severely limited until we are in talks, things and ideas, the planning and um the water district, when maybe a remote site water district system over there. So you're talking five, ten years later. So I my point from council, I'm not sure that you're gonna may ever see other credit enhancement. I don't think you're gonna see kind of them. I don't think, I think if you see another one, I would I would be surprised. Um and and if you do, I think it'll be sparring.
I don't know if this scenario would happen, just the amount of time in the area, but let's say there's an existing business that has a credit enhancement agreement and they relocate or they go under or whatever the case may be, they're not going along with there. Another business comes in, they then the the they get grandfathered into that? Do they get a new one or does it just go back to hundred percent?
So that actually is in the contract. Um so what happens is if this business moves out and 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 the purchaser has to um agree to all the terms of the contract in order to be qualified for the CEA agreement. So it would be need to be another business that's operating in the town in order to get the benefit of the taxes of the reimbursement program, which is a CEA agreement. So it's not something like if if they do go under um after this, it's, you know, we then have the flexibility of going like, hey, you know, this site already has a CEA agreement, you know, manufacturer B or manufacturer C, you know, this is another way that you can come in. You don't have to do the work to get a credit enhancement agreement as long as you follow all the requirements of this contract and you actually are producing within the town, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Yeah, remember, it's a it's a reimbursement, right? They have to pay their taxes first and then leave the tax check back. So if for some reason I said they have not financially, they don't pay this year's tax. It's a, they don't get their credit.
In the TIP agreement, the in the TIP agreement, the best that they can do is seventy five percent reimbursed and after twenty years. So this one is fifty percent as the year is distributed. There's not the back, it's one of the
Alright, any other questions, comments on the credit enhancement agreements? Okay, okay. Uh I'll go ahead and make a motion um to allow the town manager to sign a credit enhancement agreement for tax map lot one. Tax map one, lot thirty three, desk one. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All of the favorites say aye.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Thank you, Carlo. It's what you came for tonight. Um we got lots. Alright, moving on to unfinished unfinished business number two, the Spirit of America Award. Uh I think this is a a good problem that South Borough has for the first time. Uh we have three nominees for the Spirit of America Award. I think this is the first time we've had any brothers won. Um so for everybody, uh the Spirit of America Award is the award that's um uh given out by the town council, the statewide thing, uh according to town council, right? Because the town council um selects the um recipient of the award, the for the twenty twenty five Spirit of America Award. We're looking to um identify that that um award winner, I guess, this evening. And then that uh award will be given out at the annual town meeting next day. Uh so this past year, our local BMW was the recipient of twenty twenty four Spirit of America Award. Our nominees are, we have a nomination um for the South Borough Quarter. We have a nomination for the South Borough Strawberry Festival. Whole thing, I guess, for the committee, um and then have a nomination for Silver Central. Um like I said, this is a good problem to have. We have three nominees.
I would, I would uh being for Silver Central, especially because I for the power, uh the program of Silver Central and um as well as the other programs that were mentioned in in um nomination. I feel like that'd be a really great bit.
Uh I actually was leaning towards the Strawberry Festival Committee because it's been for forty nine years, they have like struggled to find volunteers um to create the sweetest day in South Borough. Um and not only do they uh they create this wonderful venue that um creates an opportunity for local vendors and artists to showcase their stuff. There's a uh a roam race. They actually give back to the community with uh promotions to high school students, which is um a huge job thing for me and and this is actually the toughest year for the Spirit of America Award because all three nominations are definitely worthy. Um but uh I just um just because of the length that it's been going, um and it's successful every year, I I just move, I I'm towards Strawberry most of all.
I think that's a good point. I'm around him, I'm very, very worthy um recipient of the award. Phil, do you have any? One, it sounds like Jeff leaning Silver Central, wasn't playing Strawberry Fest, I'm leaning Silver Central.
I was for you. Born, I've been, uh you know, um at all these events in Silver Central at times, Strawberry Fest, and it's just that's what makes South Borough a positive person. Be a part of the um community. I was leaning Silver Central. Just again, the breadth of what they are offering or what they have continued to offer over time. Um but I would not, I certainly would not um post any.
Alright, so we all, I think, agree that we have three unfinished nominees. I'm gonna give a discussion here. I'm gonna make a motion to nominate Silver Central for the recipients, there's gonna be another twenty twenty five Spirit of America Award. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Just wanted to thank you for all the nominations. And again, this is a good problem to have to have so many nominations, but hopefully some of these other ones will happen next year. Uh so we have motion on the table to nominate the so Silver Central to as the recipient of the South Borough twenty twenty five Spirit of America Award. All those in favor say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Congratulations, Silver Central and South Borough Quarter and Strawberry Fest. Thank you as well. Um we'll move on to new business number one, board and committee update. Uh so every June, um the council goes through this exercise where we essentially work through all of our board committees and work uh kind of reappoint people to the boards as necessary. Uh so I think we have several members that we need to reappoint to boards and then in one motion and then we have uh a few individuals who have decided to resign from their uh board position. So I'll first start with who are we appointing? Um make sure I have mine. Um I'm gonna make motion to reappoint um the following individuals to their respective boards um with the term expiring June thirty in twenty twenty eight. Paul Steinhour to the Board of Assessment Review. Mary Luzzi to the Planning Board. Brendan or Dan Boyle to the Recreation Committee, Jeffrey Clark, who's only Board of Appeals. Kara or Kara Maxfield, Peter Hough to the Library Advisory Board. Jane Brackney to the Supervision Mission and Dan Boyle to the Distorting District Commission.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those for all of those individuals who are willing to read up their appointment. Thank you for your service. I'm happy to have you um continue on. I will go ahead and vote. Uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Phil?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. And then on this topic, uh the next piece is for us to accept um some reservations. So we uh I'll make a motion to accept the resi- the the following board resignation. Uh Catherine Dale Prince and uh Swer Mike Seabach from the Library Advisory Board and Greg Denzer from the Planning Board.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Thank you, Catherine, Mike and Brad for your service. Um I'm gonna call you friends specifically. I've been working for a very long time and we very much appreciate your service as well, the rounds of um alright, all those in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye. Phil?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Uh new business number two, we have Tiff Budgets. Um so I think, who's talking here?
The guy.
Great. Well done.
Yeah. That'll be great.
Cool.
Yeah, we're we're gonna take turns. We're gonna work together.
Love it.
Okay, um just to give you guys some um sure. Just to give you some um uh the latest groundwork on why you have a presentation before you see your Tiff budget. Um as I always, always happens, is that I actually gave this presentation um to leadership staff. Um because I thought it was, it was time to um set a strategy on how we're going forward. Um and it's something that we've actually, you've seen from me um in the past, but this is laying it out right on paper on um on how we're we're trying to go forward. Um and so we have um a structured way to think about the things that are happening um on the day to day and on the long term. Um and so basically, um I put together this quick uh quick presentation. So um is the next slide, please? So basically, we're we're separating it into three different buckets, uh all being really directed by the first bucket. The first bucket is cultural. Those are the things that you guys are feel that are important to you as a town and to you individually and and to you as a group. Um those are usually uh ephemeral. Um it's like if you can't touch them, you know, family, you know, like it's it's uh it's small town feel, it's nature, it's um a a a family place. Um but those are, those are words and those are feelings. And then how do we then translate that into concrete actions and concrete steps that we're taking? Um and so it's basically, we're asking the question, how do we see ourselves? What version of ourselves do we want to put forward? Um and again, those are non-physical feelings. Um so we do by two ways. Um the tactical, what immediate small actions can we take to reinforce our cultural values? Um and then what policies, small capital things, procedures, programming, symbolic gestures, equipped law changes can you do um to reinforce those cultural values? Um and then the the bigger bucket and the things that we, that takes a little bit more time to do are the monumental. What large transformative actions can we take that fundamentally support our cultural values? So we're not trying to change the town. We're trying to make sure that we're reinforcing our cultural values. Um as we know, if we do not make decisions, decisions are made for us. And then so this is really trying to protect who you are as a town. Um and then infrastructure is included in that. Buildings, public amenities, road network, schools, um and large impactful laws. And um we're seeing that around over this last week or so, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Um but next slide, please. So for the cultural, it's uh sorry, go back. Um it serves as the basis of all your actions. Um it's the reason why all tactical and monumental actions to reinforce these values. Um then the tactical, actions move forward towards the cultural goals. It reinforces um actions bridge the gap from your monumental. Listen, you got some monumental things coming, like a four million dollar project for traffic. Um that's gonna take a while to do. Um and then people are gonna ask questions, alright? What are you doing in the interim? How do you, what are you, what else are you doing? Um these tactical actions are designed to be fast and and consistently make a difference. It's a small wins and there's no regrets. And so by doing these things, there's a benefit just for doing those things on their own. It it's not necessarily having to lead to another action, another action. These are small um uh uh small pieces that are enclosed that you can you can find benefit from. Then the monumental, it makes it easier to fulfill the cultural values. So you're doing these big things because it's it's supposed to make your life better. It's supposed to make your life easier. Um and it reinforces the culture again. Um and then it really stands the tenement of this is who we are versus this is who we are, this isn't who we are. So we're staying on the this is who we are track because this is, this isn't who we are. It's 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 negative and you're always trying to defend something. And that's not what we do here. What we do is we present who we are. Um and it's slow and steady. We have a vision, we stick to it, we're going towards it. Um and you know, we move as appropriately, but we're slowly still going to that, um to that, those cultural values that that you feel are important. Directly on cultural, um the things that I've seen so far here, uh that really stick out to me is family oriented, it's safe and it's inviting. Um family oriented, it's family-based programming, um and it's physically um uh good for the family here. Everything's designed for families to to take value uh uh from this place. Um it's great education and it's great things that you do. You have great nature, great sports. Your senior center, the library, programming, those things are are all designed to to make families easier to live here. It's safe. It's low crime, it's fast help. You're, you put the the money and the um experience in to to your police force, to your fire, to make this a a safe place. Um and I can walk and feel not in danger and it's easy to walk around. You you put the investment into sidewalks and things like that. Um and then it's inviting. It feels like your small town and that's important. Because a lot of small towns you can go into, it's like, oh, this is very nice, but it it being here, the people who live here, they take ownership of it. It it's their town. No matter if they've been here for five years, for ten, fifteen, twenty or thirty, they feel like it's their town and it should. Um and then it's easy to get into and it's, but it's hard to leave because you don't want to. Like it's, it really is easy to get in here, like physically, through Portland Street, you're right into the middle of town. Uh but then because we don't have the traffic like that, it's kind of hard to get out of here. Um and that's a little bit of a design. Um and then it's inviting for work and play. Your sports programs, all the communities go to. Your programming for Strawberry Festival, everyone comes here. Um your playgrounds in Shoe Town is the only one at that scale for those that age children. People still come here from other communities. And we talk about it, but people are People still come here from other communities and we talk about it, but people are still coming here because they, they love how it feels. It's easy to be here, um, and to interact here. Uh, next slide. The tactical, um, is in really just two buckets. Um, it's the programming, symbolic gestures, programming, sports, senior center lifestyle, library, cultural, seasonal celebrations, strawberry festivals coming up. Um, it's internal processes and procedures. Um, you've seen some stuff, uh, since I've been here on changing some procedures of the planning board and, and how that operates and makes it easier for people to do. Um, that's something that's quick and easy to do and that's why we do it. And it's just symbolic gestures. Shoe Town Park cleanup, um, and, um, listening sessions. It's, it's because we're actively listening to the community and it makes people feel heard. We're cleaning up and, and the, um, and some of you were there, you saw the response, just ask people to show up and they did. And it's because they feel very strongly about this place. Um, it's decorative lighting, it's murals at our, at our honor chairs, um, uh, just as an example of those types of things. It's, it's because those are gestures. It's, it's because we want, it's showing people that we want you here. The community wants you here. This is your space. Uh, next slide. And then it's the monumental. These are the big things that you're working towards because you, you want it to be a better town. Um, intersection lights, but why intersection lights? Because it's consistency, uh, for traffic and it leads to comfort, consistency leads to comfort. Um, it's increased walkability on the sides and that's why the sidewalks are part of that, that whole thing. Um, it's increased connection between the size of the street. You know, that's another thing that's a part of that, that project. Why? It's because you want to feel connected. Um, it's lower main street. Um, we're looking at traffic calming for safety and increased, um, private investment. Listen, um, that area and lower main street is your one, um, uh, commercial area that is not within a tip district. So if you get that up and running, that directly contributes to your taxes immediately. And that's why something, those small things that you can do immediately there will have an immediate impact. Um, it's connections to other parts of town by foot. Let's look around like, hey, how can we do this very quickly, very cheaply? Um, um, but like work to a bigger plan. Hey, let's get a, a, a master plan of walking through the town or do we need to make new trails? Um, and it's the public amenities, um, that, you know, is there a public ability that, that's actually directing people to lower main street? Um, I've talked to programs. People go to programs. He's, I don't have a problem with people coming here. Listen, like parking over here, actually it's good for me because if I had more parking, I have way too many people coming in. That's a great problem to have for programs. However, you have other spaces that also need businesses in. And what's going to get people just to go there rather than to just go to one business? You, you're gonna need some public, by public amenity or something that, that people can go to and not spend money. So it directs people to go there. And I'm not saying like it has to be a park or something. It's just something to direct people there. Here you have town hall. People come here, they're not looking to buy something. They, they, they businesses are here. You have a school. They're coming here, they're not spending money, they're going to the school. And then you have pumpkin town. We're working on getting them a public water source of some type, so it can develop appropriately and help, uh, um, help out and, and contribute to the, the culture of this town. Um, you have intersection, an intersection coming to pumpkin town. Right through the state, um, and we're looking at sidewalks to access those areas. Kids are crossing that street every day. And we want to make sure that they're safe. Everyone wants, it's already in your thought process. So this is not something that I'm making up. This is things that you already know. Um, and it's the density to assist, to support the expenditure and that's important to me. If you're going to spend money, uh, we want to expect some money to get back on, on something. Now, it, it might just be in value. It, it needs to contribute something to the fabric of this town. Um, next slide. So here's the thing that I pointed out. Here's some things that you are doing really well, uh, compared to other places. Um, it's a place for families. You have great natural open spaces, family programming, food that you have left. Um, education, youth sports, finances, it's physically attractive environment. You have senior programming, you have youth programming, you have convenient central location, you have a strong community strength and fabric, people care a lot and that's why they come here. Um, you have a strong informed town council. Again, this product, this was not for you guys. This was for, uh, the town, town leadership. Um, and people want to make a difference and you have a strong police and fire departments and you have a public works that saves the town money. Uh, I, I cannot tell you how valuable that is than being and working in other places. Next slide please. Um, and then we have some challenges, right? Um, one, traffic in our core is disproportionate to our size. Fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand trips in a bigger place is really not a lot. However, because we are geographically small, we feel that impact immediately. And that's why I'm saying that it's disproportionate to our size. And that's something that we have to work with, you know, being reasonable. Um, small businesses are in decline and they have challenges, um, proximity, cost, legacy, reputation and regulation. Um, I can tell you, we've lost three small businesses in the last month. Um, we have state regulations that are changing. Just last week, the regulations changed. Um, density is increasing, environmental funding, um, funding is decreasing. We have more environmental restrictions coming. Uh, consumer basket was literally just here talking about some of those. Um, the costs of providing baby ser, basic services are increasing. If you do add nothing, do nothing, your costs are still increasing. It's nothing that you're doing. There's no big thing that you're buying. Your costs are increasing because the cost of things are increasing, the cost of services are increasing. But you're, you're starting to deal with those things. Um, your brand and, and resource rec, uh, resource recognition, abundance of disconnected resources, trails historic, you have a lot here, they're just disconnected. You have the counting museum, the counting house right down there. You have a trail system back here. You have, um, uh, uh, Aggie Fields, you have all these things, but they're disconnected. And so you have to figure out, we all are figuring out a way to connect these things. And so people can actually access these resources that you have. Um, housing costs in relation to local labor force. You got, I don't need to say anything about that. Housing costs are ridiculous and, and everyone, we all need to address it. Um, and it's a large disconnect between actual and perceived transparency. This is not something you have done. It's something, it's not, this is a phrase that I, I've always rung out in my head. It's not your fault, but it is your responsibility. Um, and so you're dealing with the past and you've done so greatly and, and it just takes time to do. So consistency. And you have a population, um, a small portion of population, um, that, that they want to keep the small town feel. Um, but they're doing so by trying to stop any changes that occur. And that's an issue because it leaves us vulnerability to market and outside forces. AKA, because costs are rising, we have to do something. Because we have less resources, we have to do something. Because states are changing their regulations, we have to do something or things are going to change and we're not going to have any part of what that looks like going forward. Um, and then that just leads into a trust problem, you know? Um, and that, that's just because of the things that I, I've said before. You guys are working on these things, but I don't want to have the blinders on to saying that you fixed it. It, it's something you're dealing with on a day to day basis. So I wanted to put it here because it's something that, that's really real to you guys. Uh, next slide. Okay, so you're addressing the challenges and I, I didn't want to, I was always taught you do not just give people problems. You also, you know, put some, um, some things, you know, on the plate that says, hey, this is how we're trying to address these. So you have traffic in your core disproportionate to your size. So you're working on street infrastructure changes. You have small businesses are declining challenges, proximity costs. You, um, I, we're, we're thinking of a small, a new small business pipeline. Um, and regulations changes in support to do so. Um, there's a gap between home occupation and leasing a, a brick and mortar or building a brick and mortar. It's a huge gap between those two. And right now through our regulations and through just, yes, we're a small town. That gap is stopping some of our home ground businesses that we know from really flourishing and then eventually, you know, real talk from, uh, really contributing to our tax base. You know, they're, they're having to go somewhere else and we're having to attract outside people to fill those, those vacancies and, and leases and everything. Instead of having a pipeline that allows their small businesses to grow and then, and to, to have the demand problem of going like, we don't have any places for you. You can build something and we'll help you build it, but we don't have any places for you. Um, and then state regulations are changing. We're proactive and looking at form based changes to protect small town feel. That's the, that's, um, that's a challenge that has come to the forefront through no thought of our own. Again, this is not something I thought was going to be immediate, but now we are looking at that more closely. Um. The cost of providing basic ser, basic services are increasing. Um, we are looking at spatial consolidation and growth area and encouraging businesses, uh, creation. Um, and I'll go into that at a later time. Um. Brand and resource recognition, um, we're looking at a consolidated vision, family based town with easy access to nature. In one sentence, if I would name your town from the outside looking in, I, I'd say that one sentence. Um, and then housing costs in relation to local labor force. Um, we're looking at increased density downtown and small bills, building forms. Because we don't want to lose the feeling of being a small town, right? We have to do some things just because we have to do something, density is increasing, but we don't want to lose how it feels to be in this town. Um, and then there's a large disconnect between actual perceived transparency, dealing with the past. Um, all I can say with that is consistency, 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 um, integrity and advertising the process, stand behind your words. If you're going to say something, you do it. Um, and that's how I operate. Um, and then the population is trying to keep small town feel, um, and we advertise the cost of doing nothing. Um, town meetings to do something. And I, I'm one of the people here that's a big advocate of, of advertising, hey, listen, you don't have to make any changes. This is what's happening right now, currently. This is what happened some years ago and it's a trend. And this is the way you're going unless you do something. What you do, we can help you through that process, but if you do nothing, this is a probable outcome. Um, and then the trust problem. We advertise before, we advertise during, we advertise after, we ask, we listen and then you do. Um, and that's how I'm looking at addressing those challenges. Next slide please. All right, immediate actions. So we're already doing stuff, right? And so this is a whole presentation on, listen, this is not just words. Let's look at what we're doing. We have the intersection project. Um, we have a public meeting in late June, early July. I've asked for a date. They're supposed to be setting that up. They haven't sent it to me, but soon as I get it, everyone else will get it and the public will get it. And so we can understand where that is. Um, the holidays and, and business lighting, we received a vote to receive installations, um, um, this summer. So we can get some holiday lights or something up here. Um, parking GIS digitalization, I've said that before at a prior meeting, S N P D C is currently creating. Um, and so then we can do analysis of, of how many parking spots we have within a two minute or five minute walk, uh, threshold or pedestrian shed from this place or this place. Uh, Lord Main Street redesign grant, M D O T, um, has returned comments. Um, um, they need cost estimates to continue. Basically, we were looking at what can we do very quickly with M D O T? They have some, some programs. Uh, we're trying to see what they will accept before we can, we can get options to the entire town. Um, because if it's a non-starter with M D O T, then as a non-starter, why are we even talking about it? Um, because it's their road. Um, and then we have impact, the impact fee study that's ongoing right now, uh, to support increasing density. Uh, my idea was get the impact fee in. Get the impact fees settled and then we can talk about density. It's a different conversation now, um, but thank, thank goodness we have that impact fee study, uh, uh, going right now. And so we can, um, we can see what comes out of that. That's in progress and completion is fall of this year. Density and design discussion for regulation changes that planning board, I'm planning board downtown revitalization and source district commission. Um, design wise, since this goes on to the small town feel, um, state actions may move up timelines. You can see this was created before the regulatory changes. Um, but yes, um, Shoe Town Park, the concept plan is in production through a gift of services. So you're paying nothing for that. Um, um, Ken Weston, who is a, a member of this community and architect, is, um, putting together a concept plan of like uh, all the comments that the public had given back to see, so we can have a visual representation of what people have asked for. Um, and railroad avenue property, the U study is in progress now, decision by council for fall twenty twenty five. You guys are going to have to decide which one we do with that property. Community block party for October twenty, uh, October twenty twenty fifth. You need to have an event. You need to have something for people. Um, not saying we need to cost anything for us, but you know, what does it cost to host a street and have people out and have kids out playing on that street and so they can play? Um. Connectivity pieces, Rawlinsburg waterfront lot, railroad spur, pedestrian passages from main street, bur, road, Rabwood Avenue, Agamemnon's Road, Paul Street. Same things I was just talking about. And then pumpkin town, we have a water study, uh, and planning that we would like to do. Um, and water study would be slated for fall twenty twenty five and planning to follow. And then the intersection is actually twenty twenty seven, uh, from the state. Um, that's why I put a brush mark there. Um, the next page, please, next slide. And then we have our diet and documents. These visions don't come from anywhere. They come from actual documentation that you guys have put work in. Uh, the comprehensive plan, um, it gives the overall direction and some specific actions. The downtown revitalization plan, it gives specific actions on wanted changes. It does not cover recent world state events. You cannot do a plan for everything that's going to cover all events that are coming out. And so we're just going to react. Um, open space plan is in progress, overall direction to open spaces, um, that was, uh, given by Grant, um, and still being worked on by S N P D C. Um, uh, uh, yeah, and then bike pedestrian plan, also a grant. Um, it's took information on using options, um, to implement. And so we're being given grants to do a bunch of this stuff. Um, but I don't want to have any illusion that, um, everything's going to be free. Um, some things will, will have their costs on. Um, and then, um, we're going to move into the future, right? So we're doing some things today, so then we can do some things tomorrow and then some other things we can do. Um, not everything is linear, but some things have critical paths that we have to complete before we can do other things. And this is, uh, some of those. So traffic like in parking, um, at least to business and pedestrian and improvement, leads to pedestrian pass through town and public transportation. Pumpkin Town Water and Master Planning leads to business and housing development, um, public transit access. Um, Eastern Trail, uh, uh, which would be a part of that, mi, nature trail access and, and the industry labor train. And so you could have that right in your town. Lower Main Street improvements leads to small business development, densiting improvement, parking. Um, and then eventually it's a public amenity development and maybe waterfront or shoe town, that's all the way in the future. Um. And that's a maybe. That's why it's all the way out there. It doesn't mean that we'll absolutely do. It's just these things can lead to that. And a small business pipeline and credit enhancement agreement, some things that you've been working in today. Um, leads to a, a tent trailer pro, uh, program, a pop-up program, commercial by right. Um, and then that can lead into business retention program, accessory, uh, commercial units, those type of things. And that's building your pipeline out from the time that I'm going to make a business in my, my, uh, living room to I'm going to start selling stuff in tents because I don't have the money to do anything else, but I can make a product. To, okay, I have some money, uh, but I can't afford a lease. Well, what do you do? Uh, can I operate out, out of a business trailer or something like that or, or, or a truck or something? Uh, going into a pop-up program, hey, I don't have really a lot of money, but I know I want to try out a storefront. Can I do that on a temporary basis from three to six months at a reduced cost? Not that we're paying, but like just because it's been vacant, going to leasing, going to construction, that is a pipeline. Um. And, um, and then impact fee study supports, uh, and rural environmental protections. Listen, you need to have both. We're supporting businesses, but we also want to protect what makes us a, a, a small town place with a big geographical area. Um, Lisa form based codes light, so we're not prescriptive on this is exactly where we're going to do, but some protection for a built form. Uh, maybe some cottage courts, um, Lisa affordable housing trusts. Hey, let's get some money in to support some affordable housing, but let's do so after we have the regulations that say this is the type of house that we want. And then finally, your comprehensive plan, downtown revitalization plan, this is very broad. It, um, Lisa financial impact analysis and process improvement. Um, this is a cycle. Uh, we're not saying that what we're doing is perfect, but we need to have a process to improve. Um, and it leads to a future comprehensive plan and a future downtown master plan, area plan. After you've completed these plans, you're going fast through some of these plans. And so there will come a, a point where you're going to have to do another plan because you've completed that, that single plan. Um, and so that leads us directly into our conversation about the exact budget on, and now you guys have context on these actions in, in the longer term.
But were we done with the numbers?
Yep.
Question. Can you explain form based code?
Sure. So form based codes, um, puts restrictions on the built form of the structures that are coming up. Um, it, it allows some things like, you know, are we really worried about how many dwelling units per se are inside of a structure? Or are we worried about the size of that structure and, and how close it is to another structure and how close it is to the road? Um, if we're worried about the privacy of our neighbors, let's worry about the privacy of our neighbors and actually regulate that instead of going a roundabout way. So we do have regulations, you know, because it's the only tools that we had, that were roundabout and those are, um, uh, those are, are, are traditional zoning metrics. Um, so we'll have dwelling units per acre and, but there's no concept of what that means. So yeah, I can ask you, what is ten thousand square feet, um, per dwelling unit mean? What does that look like in the real world? And I can tell you, the answer is no one knows because you can have that within a single structure, you can have. And I can tell you, the answer is no one knows, because you can have that within a single structure, you can have multiple structures. You can have a mix between the two. So really, put the regulations on the the actual form of the building and how that interacts with the public and their neighbors. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question before we dive into the budget. Alright, good. I think we could have connected slides, but we started with these two cars. We had that packet to, this is the operating budget for equipment development and planning. The biggest changes are additional add-ins now. We also need changes of utilities, we did look into the tickets already a little bit deeper. See what else we could go into this budget to relieve the general fund. So those utilities, the fire department, fifteen percent of their portion of that building, thirty five hundred dollars. Sorry, I skipped down. Contracted services did go as well, we can also make fifteen percent of the town hall here. There will be charge to the tip. And most of the bulk of the increase of this is being able to take all library construction bonds. And we have a couple of years left as well as fifty percent of the town hall lot. And library construction, we were taking a portion of that because it is directly in. There is an increase of three hundred and eighty two thousand. Well, that's two hundred and eighty five thousand. We go to one more client, this is the big picture. The two swimming colors grows for the two different tip budgets for the current upcoming year. We mentioned the three lines in orange, I'm a green red book, but we just talked about the operating budget. That's just a little separated in there so you can see that. Just as a side mark, the green box on right is what is getting earmarked for traffic lights in the side progress. That hadn't been used. When DeCarlo and I worked together on this, we wanted to make sure that when you see in that yellow box. Is two point nine million dollars available at that time. Plus the two million we got set aside, the traffic lights. If for some reason we do not have any new funding for these traffic lights, we will still deal with the fourth data. That is our immediate goal in this budget.
I want to make sure I understand what you just said. So you said that the two point nine, two nine four two in the top right under the effective year amount, that is factoring in that is already accounted for the two million dollars, like assuming we have spent it.
Correct, okay, so. Earmark as well as the next year budget without coming out as we projected.
Okay, so. What you're saying is that in the event that for whatever reason, the two, the money we're planning on getting from the state. Yeah, the math doesn't happen that we still have.
Correct.
We don't get that any percent match from federal government, we will still be able to afford to move forward traffic projects.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So those yellow marks on the top are a snapshot of where we projected to be until twenty five, the end of June. And then every year for the board until fiscal twenty eight, which is the projected year of traffic. And you currently have a few things extra that we have in there for studies and other modernization that we like to.
Yeah, and I can I can just remark on those, the planning system modernization. Basically, you have studies that are in your comp plan and in your downtown revitalization plan that we are to to accomplish and to do. And so that's putting funds aside for those things and as well as not all of your overlays are in your G I S. And so this is making sure that it's going to be easy for the person who's applying for something to tell where they are in the regulatory atmosphere of like, hey, I'm in this overlay, you know, I can I can expect to to have to do these type of regulations. And it's putting money to the side so we can get to that one. And then the water study, we already knew the cost, so we just we just gave you the direct cost for that. Do we want to go to lower one?
Yeah, and then that's all. We did decide to put all the regular operating budgets for the TIP program that I found available into the bucket counter. That would be the thing sooner, that would not be lowered down sooner, there's a money not in there at the end of the years. We might have to give that back to the state, so they might pull that as well and try to spend that down and let the downtown TIP grow. So we're prior to the fucking down initially has been around, right?
Right, okay.
And then, okay, so then we go to the transit oriented one. You have some physical downtown improvements to do within the next year. Last year, you you allocated a a amount of a hundred thousand dollars to do that. It it seems like a lot, it goes extremely quickly. Especially when you're talking about physical improvements. These are things like, hey, you know, this could be a match to the lower Main Street project. Like fixing any pedestrian stuff that needs to be on lower Main Street. The state has a couple of programs that we would qualify for, but if you don't have the matching funds, it's use it or lose it. And those aren't things that are, they come back, they have pots of money and once they're gone, they're gone. This is something like the A T P I program if you're if you're familiar with it. And then downtime retention and small business expansion. And this is directly to start that pipeline. Talking about, hey, we need to do something to start that engine with our small businesses and allow them to function. And this is in light of us and the regulatory, you know, situation we find ourselves in in a financial situation we find ourselves with our businesses downtown and going out. And this is directly to start programs, so I would be coming forward to proposing, hey, this is how this is going to be used. This is not like a pot of money for me to use, this is this is setting aside funds that you can okay, this is a good idea to start this program, now we can have these funds to allocate work to do. Yeah. And then finally, it's the earmark that we talked about before, it goes up to the green section for for five hundred thousand to make sure you're getting your traffic light. And then legal fees. Some of this stuff is going to require legal to look over, agreements required to look over, there's changes in TIF legislation that just happened. That if there's new possibilities that come out, that you're going to need money from legal to do that. And we want to make sure that we're setting aside some funds to do that, and so it's not we don't want to have to to come back every time going like, hey, you know, we didn't factor this into our budget. Will you allow us to use this for another pot? We wanted to say, hey, we understand that this is possible cost that may come up. And so we need to to put it before you, so we you guys understand what's going on. And that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So just a couple things about that. So the two chapters that we have, right, they were approved by the state, have certain expenditure requirements or certain budget requirements, meaning that we can only budget the money for certain things, we can't can't buy buildings. We can't we just eliminated what was listed, the tip was approved by the state planning. So this budget, that all the stuff that's in the here, and then the day-to-day budget items that are crafted for that. So that we we don't have for random. We have to spend it on specifically what we created for, that's what the budget is creating, so if sneakers and they were not buying sneakers for everybody out of this and or anything like that, this is just this is directly connected and to the fact of what Janet said earlier. We have to start thinking about, so when your ten years, at the ten-year point of your TIF budget pulls out, you have to start a ten-year photo plan. But you have to create a plan saying, how are you going to get rid of all the money? So you have to project out for ten years what you're going to raise. And then you have to project out ten years, how you're going to explain it, expand it. You have to show them, so as Kyle said, when you get to the end, you have to show it, hold up your tip, there was there. Spend it on all things that we're gonna, if we don't have any money left. So if, because if we get there and we have million dollar you get this first one. Just points to operating.
Yeah. Thank you all for the presentation on the budget. Is there any feedback or any action that council needs? That you all need from the council tonight, not any of us?
Yeah, made you to approve the budget as presented, if you agree, one million, hundred and eleven dollars and five hundred and eighty seven dollars.
Oh, my, I have a sheet for that. Thank you. Alright, I know how many other questions for Marlo or Tim or Jen?
I'll just say thank you for the presentation, was great, really nice to see the work on. The money that we have in that in that sense. My mind meant to go back in town so we can make ourselves better, so that just gone. Pretty more in in public, so I appreciate that, felt very good. And again, also with the the forms. My mind kind of goes blank for a minute as I as I act, but I, very helpful, thank you very much, Ken.
Alright, I'll go ahead and make a motion to vote to approve the tip. The tenth budget as presented for a total of one million, six hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty seven dollars.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All of them favor, yeah, I, Jen?
Hi.
London?
Hi.
Phil?
Hi.
Hi, portion packed with four zero. DeCarlo, Jen, Tim, everyone, thanks for all the work and all this stuff. Okay, we'll move on to new business number three, highway budget. I'm going to give a brief, what I understand the situation be, I'm going to pass over to you guys to give more detail. We are under budget, which is a good good thing, and our C and our highway. Highway, highway department, highway department, thank you. And so staff has some suggestions on how we can move that money around to take care of things that we take care of, so I'd like you guys to talk through that.
I think if you guys can hand out all this, because unfortunately, the highway department and the C I P highway account are not within the same R B warrant. As a result, this transaction as presented originally did not happen. So we can however, consider purchasing the stormwater streets for basin cleaner, using the unused funds from the operating budget. Run me from and not transfer to C I P. Any additional funds that may be required could come out of the remaining C I P highway equipment account, I think that would be needed. And just as an update, we have spent eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars just this year on the regular streets we did for the base of payments. We did reach out to legal today as well, just to verify, it was a need to buy a C I P the operating budget, and it is, as it was all for the highway department and better of department.
I just want to repeat, repeat back from my side, so we're under budget in the highway department because of how our articles and announcers set up. The original suggestion, which was to transfer that money to the C I P, that's not possible. However, we can spend a portion of that extra, those extra funds from the highway department on equipment. And the suggestion is to spend about eleven, I reckon around eleven thousand, five hundred ish to on a three super.
The second page does show in a full.
And that's eleven thousand, three forty-four.
Fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty. What we, what the eleven thousand is, oh, we have spent out of the current budget to hire people to do the street sweeping and the basic things at the minimum requirement that we have right now.
Got you, okay, so essentially the proposed suggestion is to use the excess funds and the highway department to purchase a street sweeper. For fifty-four thousand nine. That's correct, okay, thank you. You were going to ask.
Okay, so what is, how this came about? Was we've been meeting the last three months with the stormwater nitrogen sort of button. And so the sort of button, first off, they just got their relicenter, it's been out of relic since, been a couple of years anyway. So they got the change in the nitrogen, we got written on, on, yeah, required us nitrogen piece for much, as Chris your back has said. But we had to help them get their license this time. We had to jump in and show them that we have a concentrated effort to improve street sweeping and cleaning our swamp. Doesn't go nice, but we have to take a portion of of that. So for us to catch up, we're going to catch up with regulation twenty-six, twenty-seven, as Chris had said. Currently right now, we we pay rentals to street, to sweep roads, completely all the roads. Twice a year, it's done in the spring, it's done in the fall, just after veteran day right around it, depending on the weather. All the road gets swept, leaves and debris. Beyond that, all the downtown, the village area, Jay does on Memorial Day weekend, Fourth of July weekend, Labor Day weekend, and last one veterans. We know going forward, the cost of that, two things, possible contract or service contract, identical law, obviously, maybe we'll do only boss or racing. And more importantly, the frequency in which we do that, so the street sweeping, storm socket will pull up, has the nitrogen park go up, that's all going to happen. So they came across this huge truck which very good brand new, it'd be two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand down in Pennsylvania. Your brother live with that?
Right.
So his brother's right next door to this truck, it turns out, so he went to put that, started it up, drove it around. And the the beauty of this truck is its dual purpose, it can suck the storm drains as well as sweep the street. As opposed to buying one for a hundred and twenty thousand to sweep the street, then having to still do something that won't stop. So this came up, and at the same time, we're looking to, we have extra money. So we just, this is not a need, this is a want, to get that clear. So this is, you know, if if you don't prove this, then we'll just put it in the budget for next year. But it just, this truck came up and Craig on Ken, so all this stuff all, you know, all day long, try not all day long, you know. He calls and looks to see what is good deals I wanted to do. They found this one, they asked how somehow we figured out Kyle, who used to live down there, and his brother lived in the areas, so brother checked the truck outside, it was all good, got all service record, know where it came from, it was initially in a parking lot. Block you like a big corporation like Yum, where it's down, so they did, all they did is they used their parking lot, all of them. So it's in good shape. So we just thought this was a good opportunity and opposed coming back next year, putting it in the capital budget, so well. That'll extra money, if we don't, then that extra money just go over to, that doesn't be a fun, at the end of this budget year. So Jay asked about it, what was it?
So can you say that this is a want, not a need, but although it's sounding like it is a need because they're going to be coming and asking.
It will become a need.
Not a present need, it's a future.
Correct, it's absolute.
Okay.
And it will become a need, so you know, if not, then this just happened to be a good deal, I think, that fell within our budget. You know, the guy said he would hold until tonight, till today, till the feeding or whatever. So but if not. And because, so I talked to Jay and I anticipate, we anticipate that twenty twenty-six to twenty-seven, you'll see, you'll see a fifty to seventy-five percent increase in that twelve thousand, twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars. And then once the regulation picks, we don't know how much that's going to cost, we don't know if they're going to tell us like they, so right now, they tell us that after every rainstorm, we have to check our stormwater. Every one of them. So we don't know what that regulation is going to look like in twenty-seven, if they tell us, hey, better cycle storm drain better after every big rainstorm. Okay, then now we're going to be paying twenty-five, thirty, twenty thousand dollars for a service contract, if we're going to do that. So this, it just was an opportunity that arose, I starting to want today, but it'll be a need tomorrow in the future. And I would rather, if this is a good deal, get something that lasts us ten, fifteen. And and we used to, Jay said that years gone by, they used to sweep the streets, said that bad three times, where they're going to try to sweep the streets, sweep the door. They used to do that here, but then the the street sweeper got old, they used to do it by themselves. And then, and then got old and then came and disappeared and they got rid of it. Under parity screen, they contracted it out. So that's what I think. I'll answer any question if helpful has.
So my question, anything that are unclear on what's in front of us?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
What was it that you guys, that you and Jake used to kind of base that fifty to seventy-five percent increase with that, just little costs and things like that, or like? What was that?
Well, no, so that, yeah. Well, no, so that, yeah, it's gonna be, it would be labor and fuel cost based on the amount of regulation time, the regulation change. So the piece you unknown is, we don't know, as Christie said, that we're getting, that we gotta renew our storm, stormwater permit twenty-seven. We know the nitrogen piece is huge, we know it's going up, but we don't know what it's gonna go up to, so we don't know if they're gonna tell us. Gotta go from street sweep to six times a year, because we want it done in a month to, and your storm clean from twice a year, right now we do our storm. Talk our storm drain clean. That's spring and do it to the fall. We don't know if they're gonna say, your increased nitrogen amount is after reduced by this amount. If that's, again, the problem we have, we're seventy-five percent of the hundred percent problem that the sword district has. So where, you know, the sword district supports this, by the way, they're very happy with, because they know this is about the nitrogen. And level stuff. Don't ask me about the nitrogen level expert, I mean, I had a lot of questions about, there's a lot of what this comes from, like Christie said. It's the third and no side of the road, leaves that fall down, then when it rains, it goes, nitrogen goes into the storm culvert. That create, all that went crash down there creates nitrogen and goes up to the water actuary. So I'm getting to know all the stuff, but just read with me, I, I have a coloring book at home and nitrogen.
Uh, quick question, the eleven thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars, is that? Per year or is that per streets sweeping, serves that?
Per year total so far, eight, so far in twenty twenty-five. Well, twenty-four to twenty-five budget.
This for year.
This for year. So half of it's street sweeping and half of it's storm clean.
And that's all where that we contract out, none of our department does it.
Right.
Aim for our amounts for the fact.
There you saw, that was not writing this, did you contact this out currently, or we rent it out and he runs it?
No, 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 we contracted out completely.
I guess.
Yeah, so, so right now, you hire a street, street sweeping company, they come in into that. Then we hire super back, I think, they come in and they suck the storm drains twice a year. So it's contracted forward, so that line we put out. You know, so right, right now, how much is that line there?
Well, it's mixed in with other contracted services and the basin clean. Is in the form owners, so it's in what we put these.
Um. So one more question. Um. With the amount of personnel that we have in uh highway department, are they, if we, because they're not doing this right now, they're taking this on, do they have personnel to do that, or is this gonna be an additional position that we need to get? That somebody, our time coming and help with the streams would be?
No, it's, they'll do it, so what they used to do, Jay, he told them, so they used to man, they, they come in at two o'clock in the morning and. Once, they used to do like one, seven, two weeks, they used to sweep the downtown. Jay said the guy, Steve uh Pepper, he used to come in, he come in like on a. Friday night or something, or for Saturday morning at two A M. And start sweeping and sweep till downtown district till they be done by five, so that's, that's what they would make this whole thing.
Correct.
Any other question? And then. You go.
Um. Okay, uh, so yeah, I had the same, who would, would be operating in. Um, and. Along that line, licensing are all the people that, you're saying current staffing, so I'm assuming it's just a traffic junk thing too? You don't need that sort of licensing for um, or is it just like a popper?
Like a popper. Or a boss to commercialize and put the cap on.
Okay, so really, it's truly not a specialized um. Piece of equipment that.
Well, it, it is, it is in the, in the how you run it, not everybody could run it, you have trained on the torque, suck it back and speak it all the time. But as far as for like safety purposes, driving, no.
Just so American, that added piece. What, what's the cost that we're gonna have to incur, all the extra pieces, like, um, if it's gonna be actually, same people? What's the extra piece that we need to pay for to get them to be able to drive this?
Nothing, they already, they already done it, they already know how to do it, it's over there, but they're already, they done it before, so. Like I said, we used to do this, Steve Panther done it, he is here, um, but then we got rid of the truck and. Well, Steve Panther's still here. We'll learn.
Wait, you just a little bit of overtime, Ken?
Yeah, I just didn't want to be like, yeah, Jake got this, and then, and I don't think Jake's planning on the car together, right? So uh if he did for some reason, uh, they would be. Progression plan, so, okay, great, um. Where's the waste go? From this truck?
I don't know that answer, I have to ask, I gotta ask Jake there.
Good question.
I, I know.
Dirk man.
I, I know, I know the dirt gets picked up and put somewhere because they have to get screened. And it goes, goes out to get screened and trash and all the stuff that gets in, put into it. So I know those, what happens, places like to be screened, but I don't know where, in a soccer stop, I don't.
I. I was hesitant on this at the beginning, I, that solidified my, as you could see, I love the thought process on it. Because of proactivity, that's not a need, um, I'm very concerned that this is gonna have an added cost that we are not paying for and. I just can't swallow it right now, I, I like it because it seems like a good deal, that's what I'm most concerned about, it's the, it's the.
Yeah, I'm not sure what added cost would be, I mean, be possible. Ensuring vehicles to be that cause, and if you're possible, I don't think the diesel will, the amount that. I don't think it's saved much of a increase there, we don't have to hire staff with it.
They would be saving the twelve thousand dollars and not having to hire this contractor, something that is coming here.
And this is a vehicle that um are in health, again, we think in health service, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Yeah. So, you know, and, and the other part of that is. Maybe just a small piece of it, like, or, or you mentioned about our downtown, downtown, everybody legislation, or we want. A lot nicer, streets are swept, cleaned, you know, go to big cities, you see street sweeps all the time, letting the street late at night and so forth. And I'm just, I, I get it, it's an extra added cost, they have a little extra money in the budget, it was very frugal this year, Craig, great, good, big job. Working behind off to save town money, um.
Those to the savings in his um budget place, vehicle maintenance. Do you have any else?
It was remarkable, Craig was doing down there. Um, twice, twice this year, Jay sent a fun around back with the fellow. Craig put it back. And.
Yeah, you finished that now.
I just can do some. So that'll be again, like I'm a pro greater. The money I understand is saved by saves found throughout the year, right, like you just said. What would typically happen if this didn't pop into our, onto our regard, we would have. X amount of dollars at the end of the budget, where would that money go?
It goes back into the undesigned fund, all expenses not used, all additional revenue earned over budget, all gets handed out versus the undesigned fund. And helps fill that.
So that goes back in the, as a major fund, which we put there. Two plus a million dollars on this year, this budget, yes, right?
That is correct, we should be still putting back to have a million dollars, probably more, but that would be a broadcast.
Thank you.
Um, and a couple of concerns about this, um, it's a two thousand and eleven. Um, I feel that where it's not necessarily an immediate need, I think we. The end we do, the end we go, I think we possibly, with a little more research, a little more investigating, might be able to find a little newer model. Um, get a little more bang for our buck. Uh, my other concern is. This piece of equipment potentially might only be used twelve times, uh, so once, once a month, depending. So that means this piece of equipment will be sitting out in the elements, or, or is it going to have to go under a protected garage?
So. Well, we got, if we got this, clean the storm basin once every, at least once every month, in general, from April to November, we'll do the downtown district. Which is where all the storm basin mostly at, we'll do that. So that would be.
So that leads me back to um what I said during the presentation is. The whole environmental issue of the more you street sweep, you're now, I don't know if this is diesel or gas, there's not a whole lot of, it's diesel, okay, so. Um, not a whole lot of information listed on here, but um. The more we use it, the pollutants from the vehicle are actually gonna offset the nitrogen that we're trying to keep out of the stormwater, so.
But they're doing that now already, they're, the trucks that are here, doing it. Right, I'm just saying.
Right.
Hypothetically, if, if, you know, people were treating, sleeping right now, you wanna get run on eagle, I, I could ask Craig if he would convert it to.
Uh, no, I mean, I was hoping that we could actually purchase a skid steer, put a rim on the front of it, and then the. Skid steer would be a more versatile piece of equipment, instead of just being used, you know, once every, you know, whatever. Anyway, long story short, I personally think um. We should just give it a little bit more time, I don't think we should hop on this, this truck, and I'm just not overly confident in this piece of equipment, but that we count.
Very cool, I agree. And I have questions for Tim and Dan on this. Uh, I would say, like, I have been in health for over seven, eight years, when Anna support stuff comes up, I know that's serious, I know it's coming down, but. So I feel like it was clear to me from Christie's presentation that this is going to be a thing that we have to figure out how to address in the next few years. Um, I personally feel like I trust our public works guys to. Find the best stuff, I think this seems like a good deal, and we wanted to report that, I would certainly support it, especially everyone I heard from Christie this evening, I feel like. Streets, street sweeping, basement cleaning are going to become part of our, very, uh, a lot, um, so having equipment to do it would certainly serve us. So I'll be voting in favor of this. Um, alright, any, Bill, do you want anything? Uh, I will go ahead, a motion. Um, so I'm gonna make a vote in the affirmative, if you're not in favor of this, vote against it, so the, rather the motion will be in the affirmative. Motion to approve that the highway department, unset budget amount, be closed out to the C I P highway equipment account at the end of this fiscal year. Be put towards stormwater equipment and a basin cleaner, that, that's what you need, or do you need the different document?
Okay, well.
Want to say that we'll spend the added operating account, not transferred to C I P.
Okay. Out of. Could you breathe, breathe the words that you decided, and I will say so.
Motion to approve that the highway department unset budget by used towards. Stormwater equipment basin cleaner, any additional funds needed would be taken from the C I P, any amount, um. Before that, nine hundred and fifty-nine.
Great, so moved.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion in the second, okay, so motion on the table, if you would like to support everything we discussed, vote yes, if you don't, say no, done.
No.
One.
No.
Go.
Yes.
Yes. Motion fails because it is two-two and the layers chartering right. That go. Um, you. Yep. Um, alright, very good. Uh, next team of uh new business number four, district commission request. Uh, so the council, or at least I did, I think I forwarded it to the council, um, but I heard from district commissioners, if Dan Wiles here, he's the chair of the district commission. Um, and um they have a few requests of the town council, um, and I'm going to do my best to summarize that, if you can, and you come up to the podium, and just like. Keep me on, sort of correct me if I'm wrong, um, so my understanding is that the district commission, you wanna make a few changes to, essentially, this would be to our charter, correct? Um, ordinance changes, thank you, um, because the district commission and the committee formed to be. Via our charter, so it's not an ad hoc thing, so I think in order, I guess. Sounds like the historic district commission would like to change your meeting schedule.
Yes.
And. I mean, speaking for myself, I have no qualms with that, I just wanna make sure I don't fully understand what the process is in which we need to do that, because it is an ordinance change, correct? Um, so I think if I remember correctly, we will need to, and the council need to agree that that's changed, we'll only decide a public, it's kind of a process. We'll decide a public hearing, do all this stuff in order to change the ordinance, but, uh, so for the more like administrative changes, it looks like, um, proposing, um. Yeah. That i- it essentially is just saying that the meet, regular meeting schedule we posted, and instead changing language to indicate that the H T C will meet on the first Monday of the month at six P M.
Yes, as we look through our ordinances, um, we had talked about changing the time from seven P M to six P M, just because it works better for members. And we noticed that nowhere in our bylaws does it say when we actually meet, so we thought that was sort of an omission.
Okay.
So we wanted to get at least something written in as to when we're meeting.
Um. Is that any, in any way, like, a bit of tip, uh, for us, just, I'm thinking in terms of all the practices we have to go through to change this? To say we wanna meet at six instead of seven, and then let's say ten years, five years, whenever you're not here, it's a different group, and they wanna meet at two, five, like. Is there a way that we can sort of change the language to make it a little bit like more generic, so that we, that has some flexibility, where the mission can determine when they want us to meet at P M?
I don't.
Are you following what I'm asking?
Yeah, so normally what would happen, if, if this come to me first, through the, Dan, drop it off, whoever. That point is, I would have sent it to legal to get their, their answer on, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
So this, what it changes usually come to the end of this office, or that fact, I gotta send it in front of legal counsel first.
Sure.
So legal counsel might be able to tell me that, I don't know what the answer would be, but that's the first question, my question would be, if it's not already in your ordinance. Then why put it in the ordinance, why not just make it a rule?
Well, because we were told at one point, when we wanted to change from seven to six, that it needed to go through an ordinance change.
I don't, I don't, but it's not in there now, right?
Right, but we, we had traditionally been meeting the first Monday of the month at seven P M, and when we mentioned it to, um. You know, that we'd like to shift to six, we were told that it needed to go through sort of an ordinance review. Um, this is new to me, our meetings have bounced around over the past twenty years or so.
I, I would just say, Dan, it's, it's okay if you're the council, let me send it to legal review, let me talk to Phil. As far as any wording changes, if there was any, like.
That is possible to turn.
Those others.
That would have to be, that would have to be, the one to change public hearing, that stuff, so forth, but if you just wanna change. Time and the meeting date, and it's not in there, um, do you have bylaws now?
Would you?
Is there any bylaws?
There is not.
Uh, yeah.
Myra, uh, let me talk to the legal counsel, because it's not any ordinance, so you have to. Let me talk to.
Yeah, I, I think for the two more like administrative changes you're gonna make regarding the meeting time changes, which I'm, I don't think any of us really care, which guys choose to meet if whenever it works for you. Uh, and it's all also gonna come out of the material, can those two pieces, I think, certainly the first one, we just need to understand from legal, like. What do we need to do in order to make this change, what can we do to make this a the least painful change, I guess? Is what, so we can get back to on that, the more we need, I think, was, um, you guys were, you, the historic district commission has also been looking for. Uh, and I felt like a charge from the town council as to kind of the work we would like you all to do.
Um, not so much the work, but some um sort of guidance in our bylaws and ordinance amendments. You know, we're looking for a little bit of guidance to make sure that we don't. Um, go on our way and make things that we see, we would like to see, and then have it directly contradict the comprehensive plan. And things like that, that's sort of where we wanted, we, we wanted, we haven't gone through a bylaw review in a very long time, I think the last one. We looked at is maybe twenty-ten, um, we, we wanna get it right, we wanna make sure we're not wasting people's time and making a bunch of contradictory changes. And there's also sections of the historic district, uh, commissions, bylaws, that are now directly contradicted by new building codes. Um, and so we wanna make sure, and that's something we can work with sort of on our end, is making sure that what we. Say has to be done, doesn't contradict fire codes, building codes, things like that.
Kind of going, isn't, the enforcement officer pretty well connected with the. Kind of, don't we, isn't the enforcement officer pretty well connected with the historic commission?
Usually the liaison that Dan just mentioned.
Yeah.
Um, but in this particular case, I would assign both Jenny Jacavo, as well as Chief Hamel, to do a workshop with the historic commission to help you craft whatever you need to get crafted. Those little folks will give you all the answers. You can ask those them the questions, but
Sure.
They get into now, the planning department, you know. Boy, uh, Jenny for the codes, Chief Hamel for the fire stuff.
Sure.
So my recommendation would be to set up a workshop with the historic mission, those staff members.
Sure.
Figure out what it is you wanna, you know, what you wanna wash out, uh, and do that. I don't think changing the bylaws, I think that's a vote of your buying.
Okay.
They're not in your ordinance, right?
Um, the meeting time is not there. And that was the, the one that we, you know, jumped out of right away.
I think we agreed on the bylaw thing and more, but the bylaw we need to find out just what legal and how we can do that. I think, I think we kind of put that one to that. I think on the topic of just kind of you guys having a little bit more clarity on what needs to happen and stuff, I think what you should get to make sense, um, and especially if sort of district commission stuff is not taking a time with our comprehensive plan, that's kind of part of why we put together the comprehensive plan was to get us on this path, to get everything to tie and tie and talk to each other. And so will between the Carlo, Jenny, um, and Chief Hamel be able to, and I, I know the answers yet, but just kind of be able to say, okay, given the comprehensive plan, these are the changes that need to make, sort of district commission, or like suggestive changes, that kind of exercise? Um, that's something that's doable, except, okay.
Do it, absolutely.
Um, and then any, at the end of the day, any changes you guys only will come before the council anyways, and it's a normal process. Um, so it's sounding like at least at this point for the bylaws or the composite material addition, we can kind of get the ball rolling on that, and then whatever procedures the council needs to, because she just takes care of it, we can, it'll be evident. And then Tim and Jen, I'll let you guys kind of facilitate the workshop we discussed with Chief Hamel, Jenny, Carlo.
So it'll be down for the the thought plan, Jenny for the codes, and Chief Hamel for the fire stuff.
Okay.
Right. Get them. So what I'll do first is I'll send this to legal. I get that back then, I'll reach out to you and turn it back to you, then it will, we'll arrive, I'll, that's what I know. I'll report that back to the council directly.
Cool.
Good question.
Yeah.
Uh, so uh, historic district bylaws, let's say, one forty-five. This is, I'll just say you're prepared for it. Uh, historic districts ordinances need the, the next two. Um. This going in, um, so is it clear to you what we just, what you just said? Because when I got the, when I saw the letter, I, I understood uh it to ask for a scope. Um, focus. Like that, kind of, I can't find it. Um. So I, I spent some time on it, I, I, as far as the scope, and in my mind, I feel like the scope of this ordinance project should be all the, all the tests, essentially, right? Um. I had, you know, what would be in scope would be the uh all the text, ensuring that text matches the maps, you have maps, match the text, however that works. Um. Definitions, one of my, my main concerns about that ordinance is that there's some weird definitions in there.
That, that's one of the other things we were looking to tackle is there there's a lot of stuff that's sort of gray areas, you know, things that the phrase, you know, shall be or should be avoided, um, things like that, that it's open to a little bit of interpretation, but it's also fairly wide. We'd like to kind of narrow some of these things down, what is allowed, what is not allowed. Um, and again, a lot of this stuff, I think, was written in nineteen eighty-six originally, so it's it, it's due.
Yeah, I find this is a, uh, this especially important ordinance. Because while our ordinances do tell our residents what is allowed and disallowed and all that, but the historic different this district ordinance has an extra blend and an extra layer to that. It's almost like a homeowners association type of thing, which I think is necessarily.
Yeah, please don't lump us in.
But the added stuff is in there, and I, I believe that we owe it to our residents that we are very clear on that. So um without an actual, what is the actual charge from the town council to? Or is it just figuring out guys and sample, because that's what I heard. Maybe, maybe.
I think, I mean, I, I think that's kind of what we put this on the event, or I've talked through, and Dan, I hope that if we're not clear, and then I hope you will tell it. Um, I think the charge of the entire town, given our comprehensive plan, is to sync up all of our ordinance length, all of our ordinances with the comprehensive plan, and make sure everything takes a tie, and I think this I'm just speaking for myself, this is what falls under this falls under that umbrella of the historic district commission, just like the planning board starts sifting through their content saying this is, these are the changes that need to be named, given the comprehensive plan, given what we're tracking for. Uh, and that, that's at least my agreement. I don't know what you think about that, that, Dan, or if you guys need more, more.
No, I, I think that's good. I, I think that's good, you know, um. You know, our, our, our goal is to get things sort of moving so, you know, from point A, you move to point B to point C, and things like that, moving along. And figure out some of the ambiguity and some of the definitions and some of the rules.
If I may, um, so just in talking, so it's on the record too. Uh, I think the car looked at the nail on the head, uh, in his presentation, I had written it down while I was going through this, and I wrote I like a lot of the wording, wording in this. Especially in our conservation historic area. Because as I see it, even our laws, rules and ordinances, so they should engender and support um, eng- engender support of these areas, not prohibit them. So there are key pieces in, in this ordinance, especially where it's like you shall, shall, shall. And I think that just a little bit of the wording, encouraging, you know, preserving, really is a just a, just a change in the earth. I think it really helps along what you go to find.
Sure.
Just wanted to say that. I can hear you.
Yeah, so Dan, as of right now, you guys still be on the first Monday of the month at seven P M. Is that correct?
Until we feel that we've given the go-ahead to meet at six P M.
Okay.
Then, yes, we will still be meeting at that time.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because on the website, under the historic district, it does say that they do meet on the first Monday of the month at seven. So if some random person wanted to go to one of the meetings and I just wanted to make sure the information was correct, so.
Sure.
So I think a good question to pull into our, when we do check up legal is like can we, is there anything that we can do in the short term, just given the process that may need to have in order to get these changes to take place? Can we get, is there a motion the council can make to say, you guys can meet at six o'clock, seven, uh? You know, I think that that'll be a good question for legal, but there's no reason you all can't meet at six versus that, we just have to make sure we're doing everything. Uh, so if we can just get an answer on that, um, then we could do whatever we need to do to make sure you guys.
Okay, great.
Um, okay. Anything else that we need to cover?
Yeah, I think we're good for now.
Okay, definitely reach out if you guys have need additional therapy or anything. Thank you for.
All right, thank you.
All right, um. Yes.
Um, the only other thing that was noted um in the information was that Lenbo actually is not looking to be um, his term actually expired for the commission uh on June twenty twenty-five, and he asked not to. Is that correct, Dan?
He's asked not to be very.
Yes, thank you, that's what I was.
Okay, we did not, I definitely got things named, right, in my so this is, I think we dealt with that, but we also didn't we just didn't re-up his, his appointment. We didn't, he's not resigning, it's not a resignation, he's just choosing not to re-up, right, okay. Uh, so I think, because his term is just ending.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, one, one thing, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just jump back quickly to uh new business, uh, number three, the highway budget we talked about. I had mentioned that our public comment that we had written, received an email from a resident uh regarding uh, that particular item uh from Terry Coolen, just kind of reaching out, kind of in opposition of the original suggestion that was put in our um support, supporting docs uh to move that money to C I P, and as we all know, that whole thing failed, so it's moved, but I just wanted to make sure I addressed the comment from Terry Coolen. Thank you for reaching out to the council. Okay, tell me if it's important.
So on the highway, Emery Bridro Pelvin, um. Uh, Monday, the threw out the last stop, the base coat of gravel. Um, Jay and the crew have done a great job. They're a month and a half ahead of where they're thought they would be. Um, so on Monday, the threw out the last stop, the base coat of gravel, preparation for paving on Wednesday. Um, the guard rail is gonna be installed on Thursday. Uh, there are no issues, the road should be open by Thursday evening.
But this Thursday?
This Thursday evening.
Yay.
Yeah, there are no issues. Uh, so a full-time labor position that got posted, we had uh somebody leave. So the reporting is the mowing, mowing and sidewalk following position. Oh. Police found at four arrests, seven accidents, ninety-four traffic stops. Um, the host did a how to set up a drone program with light instruction. Have a cabinet, like Lawson Police Department, Nesho, uh, Police Department. Rock to the class, the class went very well. Why have I been at eighteen calls the last two weeks, two hundred and ten year to date? Town received its non-transporting M S license on Friday, June thirteenth. They came down to the inspection, said it was a five-star inspection that Nick and uh Katie had done a great job putting all the equipment together, putting it on the explorer truck that we're using, and gave us our license. When it affect that afternoon. So now we can first respond calls, which is a huge difference to the idea that when there's a backup, follow the path, and just had the way you stand to call like Dover or Stewart or somebody else. Now we can legally go respond medical service. Uh. Many M S representatives comment commended our preparation intention to detail. Chief Hamel spoke to many M S while they were here about obtaining a transport license. Including full paramedic service, and they've already started working on the various aspects of the transition. The state said they didn't think of from where we are now and where we're gonna go. They said it'll be de-transition, so we're happy with that. New engine is approximately eight percent of flip. Uh, care staff are trained, people made the truck. They have training sessions on all the aspects of the truck and pumping. Time driving, they're working to get qualified as quickly as possible, and people's he hopes to have it in service this weekend for the strawberry cup. Go enforcement had eleven building permits, a hundred and seventy-four uh states this year. Free plumbing permits, two certificates for rock, fifty-two, twenty-three inspections. Three violations. Um, in front of the zoning board of appeals, one administrative appeal, and then the historic district commission meeting will be on July eighth. Um, planning and economic development. Michael Gioli. This is economic analysis from special lives incorporated, and that was most of the five minutes on Wednesday, that was for the impact study. Thank you. Uh, watching and keeping up to date on legislation, is there a long list with many items that would impact on the self-purport, the cow's gonna keep me informed about the city, however, I've asked the cow, so one of those decisions um, that has now become law, I asked the cow to bring it to you tonight, so five minutes ago, so foul.
Okay, the context of this is that um you've heard earlier today about L I D standards, that's environmental standards are coming down.
Yeah, possible, Mike.
Sorry, uh, those are environmental standards that are um coming to play for your built environment, which changes those standards. On the other side of that are additional density things that are happening. So we're right in the middle of both of those. Um, but we're all gonna work as the town together, we're going to um work through it. So there's actually three, three, the thirty-five bills that we need to be aware of, but immediately, we need to be aware of these three bills that pass, um, L D four twenty-seven. Uh, now we'll mandate that it's one parking space per dwelling in the growth area maximum, and so snow one point five per dwelling unit. Um, uh, and nine nine seven. Uh, and you'll see how these start to cascade on each other. Uh, L D nine nine seven, anywhere commercial uses are allowed, you must also allow residential. Um, I am, I have contacted M M A about our industrial areas, because those are commercial areas, they sell goods. Um, and I'll get a response from there um for you guys, so, but you all needed to know that. Now, um, the bigger one is L D eighteen twenty-nine, um, that's uh, it's a bunch of changes um, that impact other changes in other pieces of law, but these that you need to be aware of.
This speaker's bell.
Yes, yes, it's one of the speaker's bells. Um, so uh, the first change is uh, no growth ordinances in the growth area. So that you can't limit the amount of dwellings that are happening in the growth area. Number two, your local plumbing inspector decides if waste and wastewater is adequate um to be getting a permit. Um, but three, three dwelling units per lot everywhere in a municipality. Um, so that's everywhere um within a lot of record. However, it's four dwelling units um per lot within a growth area, or it has access to public water and sewer. Um, so that's any lot of record.
That's not downtown.
That's, that's our, yeah, downtown, um.
There's, there's no acreage, like
The.
Like, would you put more places on one acre of land?
Yes. And it's stay with it, because there's more.
Yeah, like.
Um, yeah. So, so the next one is density within a growth area in areas that have public water and sewer, so it has to be both, growth area and has public water and sewer. Uh, your density maximum is uh, uh, twelve fifty square feet per dwelling. That's your maximum that you can have. Um, so an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet, pretty sure I got that right. Um, so that is your, once this comes to play, that's your new density, your growth area that has public water and sewer. If it's within a growth area and without uh public water and sewer, um, it is twenty thousand square feet, which is about a half acre. Um. Now, um, this, yep.
Sorry, because I don't have a public meter cap. None of this takes into account the fact that the capacity of our water is.
And so, so uh, you, you have to show you have capacity where you can't get the, the dwelling unit, but we can't have a law that says your density is, is more than what this is. Um, density outside of the growth area, um, and it has public water and sewer, it's five thousand square feet per dwelling. Okay, I'll go to the next one. Um, a municipality may not require planning board approval for four or few dwelling units within a structure. The next one, a municipality shall allow an accessory dwelling unit to be located on the same lot as a single-family dwelling or a multi-unit structure. The change is you also can have an A D U um, that has a multi-unit structure. Um, this is a big one, um, a municipality shall allow the construction or occupancy of an accessory dwelling unit on a lot, even if the owner of the lot with accessory dwelling unit is located, does not reside in a dwelling unit on that lot. And so they can own the property and own a structure on a property and have an A D U, you no longer can say hey, you, you, there's no living requirements anymore. Um, and then finally, uh, a subdivision within a structure, less than five units, is not considered a subdivision anymore. Um, and in fact, it can't even go to the planning board. Um, so those are the immediate ones, and so you can see why I put all that stuff in my presentation on, hey, you're, we're gonna need to make a lot of decisions very quickly um about our growth area itself and structures and how we want our structures to look and how to operate within the public. Um, this is not all of the changes that. This is not all of the changes that happened this legislative session. But these are the, the most immediate that I needed to notify you guys.
So these, these changes begin to turn the wheels around and things like. So to you, I'll tell you exactly what battle talked about earlier. This ties into remember, if we don't plan for it ahead, they're going to give it to us anyway and drive us. So understand very clearly now, they sit here tonight and they talk about budget increase. Please, you're talking about four A D Us, a five dollars per foot pond or. Less than an acre or in downtown, so our downtown area, growth area, water and sewer. You start adding four A D U to a place to a rental that's got, you know, a new industry that's got six or five already. And then start adding. Look at the growth of public services, please buy again. And that's schools, traffic. And so what happens if someone decides to put three or four A D Us. Small lot and foot street, but there's no parking anyway. And add six car and it's a weekend. There's no, and there's cars back there where the fire works and we will get through. And so all this stuff is stuff that we, as we move forward, we're going to have to start working. Like the guy said, this is an old form. These are a lot of, these are, this is like a huge bill of rest.
I just want to find out that yesterday, and I sent out an email to all of them and I responded to this and I emailed Janet Mills directly. Specifically about L D eighteen twenty-nine. It's basically eroding the local decision-making authority by required municipalities, once again, amend or organize to meet ever simply housing development related targets. So I just need you guys to know that I reached out and tried to get this to not happen.
There seems that Madam Chairman, I'll say this respectfully, because I, I, I know Tiffany's on listening. I had a talk with Tiffany about this yesterday. I'm fine with Tiffany said for this stuff. I get that. But I, it seems to be a trend out of the guster. It, it seems like we're losing local control. And if that trend continues, it started in two thousand and three or whatever. I don't know if that's an accurate fact. But when you start telling me that we now, we now have to change our subdivision ordinance to meet rules, right? They lost them. They now is creating subdivision ordinance down South Borough. And so what will they create now? Right? What's, what's going to come out of the next time and the next time? And so they're taking away home rule. And again, I, I, I had a great talk. I, I, nothing to do with. You know, Tiffany bought some of these bills and I don't know which ones exactly. She doesn't jump there from big. But I, I know Tiffany answered some of our concerns and tried to change them. Can you put on some of those committees? But not one person, the whole narrative look right. But now we get to go back. Look, so now, now how we used to control this, we don't control it.
And we have to do a whole lot of administrative work and spend a lot of money in reference to not have the controlling.
So, so thank you all. So, you know, like I, I can't leave you on a sour note, right? It's not, my job is to push it forward. These are, I'm not going to, you know, joke around that. These are big changes to how things have been done in South Borough and a lot of our towns. It does present an opportunity to not just take. This without having anything else, because if you just allow the state to just have these provisions and you don't enact some type of. Decision-making on the local level, what you get is a built environment that does not reflect your values, right? So it's a big difference for having four dwellings on a lot within a structure within a Victorian that has been converted to four units. Because that's still four units within a structure rather than a huge apartment building with a flat roof. Ultra modern in the middle of your building. And that adds a completely different feel for if you have what's called a cottage court, which is a, a series of small buildings that still fits into the neighborhood. So these are, these are, they're ways to deal with these provisions. And we're going to go forward when we need to, and we're going to make sure that our town continues to function as our town. Thanks.
Thank you.
So on that note.
You first.
Oh, sorry. But no, but I just wanted to chime in on that as well as far as things changing. We have a coast bus pickup now from being town, I believe. Correct? Did I say that?
So, so we've actually always had that for a long time. And that's one of the things I've actually been asking the state about, about additional funding. For the coast bus comes one time a day, five A M. In the morning, comes back at three o'clock in the evening. Bigger picture, if our town has to do this, other towns around us will also have to do this. We'll, which increase the traffic that comes through our town. So we have to think of clever ways to use public transportation to offset some of those things. And so it is worth another conversation, you know, with the partners. I'm looking for grants and things like that in order to increase that service. So people, and that bus actually goes, it, it's marketed as the one that goes to the shipyard, but it actually goes to Portsmouth. And so we do have public transportation in here, and if we can get some regular service, you know, by the state. And we can, we can offset some of that traffic coming from our own residents going, going through to their sits.
And the only reason I thought that was with the change in action, there to be, it is forcing us to become. We're not stacked up like they have, we don't have that population and the ability to have the public training readily available. Let alone mentality of our people for a jump on. And again, I just wanted to take a hint to, you know, kind of, you know, shout out to you there, Carlo, because I know that you've mentioned it a number of times here. Getting and reinforcing that post bus line in the. It just popped up to me the other day. I know, they could play here or whatever. I just noticed it.
Yeah.
Again, things are changing and staying ahead of the change every maybe ten, I think you guys have shown that.
Thank you, Renner. Comment or part.
So just to follow up what Sal said. You know, we're going to draft this this weekend, work as a team going forward with. Team will be the town council, the planning board, historic commission to go forward. Try to make sure that we make changes that fit our people. So we're going to drive the bus, not have the bus ride. Transport station will get ready for single source. Sending out the, we're sending out all our cans one last time with our current vendor. And then the white goods and empty glass, everything we've voted out, send out with it. We're hoping to get the new machine tomorrow, tomorrow, Wednesday, so the new contact will come on Thursday. We're hoping to get that swapped out. Trial run on single source this weekend. Coming up, then hopefully go live next week.
The library and okay, they're going to be there on Saturday, Friday second. They will be also participating in the strawberry festival and having a movement activities on June twenty. The last of the main speaks, series author visits will be tomorrow, twenty fifth at six P M. Serena, last day and February will be tomorrow, the twenty fifth. We have started interviews for her today. Recreation last of the springtime for program, programming wrapped up on June seventeenth. They are already working on an additional four weeks to continue this program in July. Summer camp is completely full with a waitlist. And the rec department is also selling discounted tickets to Yorkwell Kingdom, Aquaboggin and Fun Town slash now. If anybody's interested, there's a limited number of ticket sales. Senior program, they are having their fourth of July election early this week, tomorrow, maybe center as they are supposed next week, which is a program. And something, the town library evaluation, callback and no trespassing letter, something for San Joe on Wednesday, June eighteenth. Property owners who wish to build guarantee, staff for inspection, call them directly. Middle of July, she is consulting, have preliminary values set, letters will be sent to property owners. At that time, we will not have a tax rate set, so they will just be seeing with their evaluations of their. And the first office, we join to a board of committees and we are in need of some members in place of our awards. The board of assessment review, recreation committee, zone, zoning board of appeal, planning board. And the library advisory committee. So if we know anybody who might want to be interested, please subscribe. There will be three seats open for the town council and one municipal board, open to three-year terms. Navigation papers will be available in the front office on August fourth, due back by September eleventh. Finance, benefits and safety. We had twenty-two personal property letters thrown out last week for people who have past due balances. I attended the H R management, management conference in Portland on June eleventh. It was an all-day event. It was very educational. We did receive last week, state aid from M I M A for the storm that we had on April twenty twenty-four. And that was forty-seven thousand dollars that we received. Money we've already spent on to fix all the damage. We never seen some of that. As you know, brother and I have not finalized to the budget last week. They are working a lot on the wrapping up, starting, starting to wrap up your end preparations for the new and upcoming year and getting everything ready. And you have new software, so put up the new gear that I'll have to do Monday evening or at eight o'clock. After everybody's done posting everything, hopefully it'll go as smoothly as it always does. We attended the Tuskegee farewell dinner last night, D Center. That was a very full and fun event of my life. And I did speak with Eagle Maine this morning. They wanted to just tell me about the community events and outreach programs that they have. It's actually quite advanced. They like to deal with the schools. They went to educational programs, come to a council meeting. They will be going to the transfer station on Saturday, August sixteenth and will have a recycling event. Be giving out recycling jokes and answering anybody's questions about recycling.
Brad, then my office, I attended the upcoming down interview meeting and. All honestly, though, so basically the whole hour was spent on L D eighteen ninety-seven or whatever it is. Steve Ockins, who just traumatized. I can't really go like, I can't, he said, you got crazy, crazy. I can't do it, can't do it. So bi-weekly schedule the M S update meetings, a meeting, myself, Jen. Chief Hamel and Katie are meeting, are proposing the M S program. Make sure that every two weeks you get together and have a checklist, make sure that we're moving stuff forward. Myself, Jen, Diane went to Matt, Matt and Matt with high school. In preparation for winning the election, changed the magic of high school. But once we get that application back, we need to fully, we'll have to make that final approval. Yeah, bi-weekly meeting with old coin last one, that day meeting wasn't much. Really was first meeting with Connor Brothers coming in. We're working on the, I'm working with Phil Soster on. He shot about his contract, signed that it's a development. So they're working, they're already working with Oak Point as far as the drawings and all this stuff they need to, in the background. While we get the contract up to going. We received five proposals for the owner's representatives. They are anywhere from ninety-five thousand to. Oh, ninety, ninety-five dollars and I went to two hundred and fifty dollars. So that, they were all big corporations, none of them fit what we wanted. So we just sent thank you letters of me and Jen. Old point to help us to go through it. I called Tyler. What Tyler said is we can put language in the contract that says any change order, work order, because we're not. No, we're not structure people will have to have third party approval through the architect. So if there's going to be a change work order, it has to go through Cada, it has to go to the architect, the architect should talk to us about it. And so we have a safety net through that. Fair construction manager's contract. Lassos, the last, Lassell, Lassell from. Nikki, Nancy from Lassell, law architects, came over and brought us the samples for the four choices of the colors. I spoke last night at Tuskegee farewell dinner, D Center on behalf of myself and the council. Councilor and Andy was there with life. Nice event. Yep, good event. It was fun. We presented the mayor from Tuskegee with a picture. The signed document for the, the. Proclamation, yeah. And a picture. And then I spoke to Swan Lake State House and I left for Galapagos, Red Act. Just to make. That's it.
Thank you. Sounds like I'm a, John, you got anything?
I just been looking around at the ordinances. I printed off this, we'll be J Y C. It's literally just our, but I was looking at our sign on this. Actually, it's just a request from the, from the historic district and then I got thinking about the rest of the other sign from the. And I'm a little concerned about what it says in regards to replacement signs. It's one forty dash twenty-six. G, number two, the number two. It did now specifically, number three talks about no sign located in the area defined above, which is all like the main downtown area. None of those signs shall be replaced or repaired in the future. And it just had a little bit more detail and I thought it was kind of weird and wonky and I just wanted to bring it up to the council and to staff. Maybe we need to fix something there ahead of time before we're trying to put signs up in our intersection to whatnot.
Yeah, what's the, what's the, you made a.
One forty dash twenty-six. The letter G. And then number two and three under change.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll get it. Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up first.
Thank you.
Amazing and funny. And then, you know, just every time that I, I had the opportunity to sit, talk and meet with the Tuskegee folks. And I just, I really do, it's really our point and it really just a great, great time. And it was really nice to see Diane, Jen, Dawn and Tim there. Representing the town piece, you know, the government piece too. So. But it was really great, really nice and awesome to see and know that that has reciprocated that. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for showing up too. And. Yeah.
Strawberry Festival this Saturday. Bill, is this your last meeting?
Yeah, you did stop.
Oh, okay. Thanks. And I also wanted to say the crosswalks around town have been refreshed. And I've literally noticed it. I don't know how long ago it was done, but it, they're really vibrant. They really stand out. And it really actually would just, whether there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk or not. The vibrant colors actually just automatically make you slow down. Like it's amazing like what colors can do in a crosswalk. So thank you for doing those and that's all.
My handler comments, it consists of congratulations, Bill, on his last town council meeting. He had a use with us for a short time, but a good time. So Bill, we have been a pleasure having you. I'll look back for you. I'll read it. For the time spent in and contribute, contribute to the offer to the town on both the signing board, I'll look for you on the signing board.
Read the block. All flyers.
All flyers. It is, say it on here. Say it on the, on the planer. Your efforts helps make South Borough a better place to live and grow. A million thanks from us, from the advent staff, to everyone to you. And I'll give you the box. So Bill, best of luck. We will miss you and we've had a pleasure having you. And I'll like make your last, you're, you're in the last one tonight. Congratulations.
I, I won't keep it too long. It's like you said, very sweet. I appreciate everybody that I've been able to work with now. It's been a lot of fun. I, I could sat, see Greg's. I'm just stepping down. I was on, I've been working for a very long time. Super professional in that capacity. It was great to be able to work with him. I learned a lot being next to him and on landing board and then. Moving over here on this side of the house, sitting next to Tim and Jen and everybody else on the town council has been. As easy a process could be, it's weird. It's never. Care much about local politics until I got into this town, asking you, so. I really enjoyed the time. I really enjoyed this town for. I really enjoyed the time, I really enjoyed this town for. Said the, but. I know that the direction of the town is something that's very exciting, we are something that. Will always be a former or a current president, I am very excited about the way the direction of the town, and that can be well known. Go ahead.
We'll miss you. Thank you, Bill, we will miss you, right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bill, I'll just fill the last second, favor, say hi.
Hi.
Return, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.